Thank you very much, folks. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of May 14th, 2019. Could I ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Steve, for the folks at home, we will blow up for them the agenda for tonight's meeting. They can take a peek and see how long they would like to join us for from the comfort of their home. Okay, very good. We are going to start tonight's meeting. It's the first meeting of the month. And we started each month with the supervisor's report. It's a report of the financial condition of the town at any given moment. This is for the period ending April 30th, 2019. And we started off the month with an opening balance of $7,574,454. We have receipts of $2,410,729, dispersments of $2,699,749, with an ending balance of $7,285,435. You have in your folder, in addition to the supervisor's report, some budget adjustments that are proposed by our bookkeeper, Ann Conway. Just a couple of notes on that. We did receive our franchise fees from Spectrum Time Warner Cable, and they came in above expectation. And that's for the prior year, 2018, but we booked it in 2019. We had budgeted $65,000. We received $79,664. Okay, you also have in your packet the variance report for the month. Are there any questions? If not, I would entertain that we have a motion to approve the supervisor's report and the budget adjustments. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the clerks' report. Sue?
Town clerk monthly report, April 2019. Total local shares remitted to supervisor, $1,334.28. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for their spade and new program, $56. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $22.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation, $769.22. Total state, county, and local revenue, $2,182. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town of Red Hook, and connection with my office. I also have three abstracts for you tonight. This abstract is for January 2019. And vouchers 24408 through 24508 were paid, and I'm certifying that the numbers were processed in January. The total abstract, $122,354.24. We have an abstract for February, vouchers that were paid and processed in the month of February and approved by the town board. Voucher number 24509 through 24654 for a total abstract of $655,197.45. Our abstract for March 2019 is as follows. Voucher number 24655 through 24718, they were processed in the month of March 2019 and approved by the town board. That abstract was $83,212.36. And that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the clerks' report?
There are.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you, Sue. Announcements? We have several announcements for you this evening. One is, we would like to let you know about an annual food drive that's occurring at the Red Hook Community Center, June 11th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that is for Red Hook Central School District families who depend on the food service for their family, for their kids, and that's during the course of the summer months. We also would like to let you know, we are doing some roadwork, and the roadwork has been delayed because of the weather unexpectedly. So, the work that was anticipated to be done on Rockefeller Lane, I believe, last week, and then potentially even this week, is now looking at next week. So that's the week of May 20th. And you'll be seeing updates, I believe, on the sign that's on that road there, right? Just to let folks know, if we get a break in the weather, the work consists of spraying the road with oil and laying down stone and leaving the loose stone to adhere for a week or so, and then we sweep it up. There'll be no road closure during that period, and there should be minimal interruption of normal traffic for that. We also want to let you know that there's going to be a hazardous waste disposal event for schools, government agencies, farms, and businesses. This is in Poughkeepsie on Friday, June 21st, 2019. And you must register for this event by June 3rd with Dutchess County Solid Waste Management. We'll put the information on our website, redhook.org, but you reach out to solidwastemanagement@dutchessny.gov. And we also would like to let you know about a terrific event, the Special Olympics. Folks may remember that Dutchess County hosted two successive Winter Special Olympics, which were terrific events to attend. This summer, we're going to host the Summer Olympics. And the competition takes place at several locations, Bassar College, Sunny Dutchess, the Fishkill Bowl, Mr. Todd's Gymnastics in Poughkeepsie. That's from June 14th to June 16th. And as always, they're looking for volunteers to help out with the Olympics. It's an incredibly rewarding thing to do, and I encourage you to consider that if you have the time. I know Bard, Aaron Canaan, is here. Bard sent teens, volunteers to the Winter Olympics, and it was really quite inspiring. Okay, we also want to let you know, this week is Peace Officers Week. It's law enforcement. We take some time to remember those who've lost their lives in law enforcement. And tomorrow, actually, is the day that we fly the flag at half-staff to commemorate those who were lost in the line of duty. We want to let you know, first of all, I should say a huge thank you to everyone who turned out to help us with our community bill at the Rec Park Playground. We think we may have had over 150 volunteers come through between the five days that we did the community bill. We had incredible donations from companies, from individuals. Our employees were terrific. Our highway department helped us unload the very large trailers worth of equipment. It was really a terrific event. I encourage you to go over to the Rec Park this weekend to take a look, and hopefully by then, enjoy the equipment. We have two more days left to spread some of the material on the base there before some of the equipment is safe to use. But it was really a terrific event. And thank you to everyone who put in time and effort for that. You should know that we also saved the taxpayers a bunch of money. It's estimated we saved between $60,000 and $80,000 by building it ourselves. And we've got some terrific equipment for those with special needs who can enjoy the playground as well. So there's much more to come in the Rec Park, especially as it relates to accessibility, replacing fencing, redoing fields, redoing lighting. So we want to let you know that the interruption has only begun, really, with renovations at Rec Park. But I think you'll start to get to see that it's hopefully worth all the pain, if you will, because there'll be lots of gain coming to our recreation facilities. So we do want to let you know that we are now ready with being able to sign up for our Rec Park Summer Programs, and we're expanding the time for those programs now in the morning. It'll be from 9:00 to 1:00. And many of the kids continue on for some of the city games. So you had asked us last year during some of our needs assessment to take a look at the programs and see if we can design the programs better so that we can accommodate parents and make it possible that, you know, parents can take part in these programs. And so you can go to redhook.org. The brochure is ready to sign up, and you can sign up online. And you can also sign up a person here, June 1st and June 8th are the two sign-up days here at Red Hook Town Hall. That's from 9:00 o'clock in the morning to 1:00 p.m. Those are my announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements? No? Okay, very good. Public comments before we get started?
Lynda Kealan. I have two issues. The first one being, about six months ago, I contacted Steve Cole about the inaccessibility of the Greg Farm renovations and building that was going on. In the interim, he did nothing. During that time, my friend, who uses a scooter and is disabled, was not able to get into the building, into the area where you go into the cafeteria. It's a 90-degree area, and the scooter won't make it. Also, there are now stairs going up to the second floor and stairs going downstairs. So this person was discriminated against. And I would like to see the town board get on Steve Cole to make sure that some sort of elevator or a lift is put in there so that people who are disabled can get and use the facilities. My second issue is regarding the CDG project. I don't believe you did a public hearing. So you have to do a public hearing. Can't.
You'll hear more about the CDG tonight and who's doing the public hearing.
Can't do it afterwards. It has to be done before.
You'll hear more about it. Lynda, it'll answer your question. Okay, any more public comments?
Ross Gold, just a quick comment. I wanted to find out, several months ago, you had all voted on a resolution to lower the speed limit in the Forest Park neighborhood. We're waiting still on those signs to be put into place, so we just want to find out, I just want to find out what the next steps are and where we are in the process of the signs that would go in order to show that the speed limit has been lowered.
Yeah. So Ross, we put your request forward. Dutchess County supported the request for the neighborhood, and New York State Department of Transportation denied the request. So we'll be going back to try to make the case, which is often what we have to do in order to succeed.
If there's anything I can do to help that, please let me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Ross. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. Very good. So why don't we jump into the first item on the agenda? We have with us our superintendent of schools and our business manager, Bruce Martin and Paul Finch, not necessarily in that order. Gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for coming here to.
Thank you for having us again.
Yeah.
I'm going to cut to the chase. I'm sorry to burst your bubble, guys, but I have to cancel the solar project. Instead, we're going to be sunny again. No, it's been a rough spring when you know, you're talking about the one Saturday that was really sunny and nice. We're going to talk about the solar project in a little bit, but let me talk about the operating budget first. It was largely uneventful year in terms of budget development for us. We had a structural deficit, as we always have, but a couple of things came together. We had lower-than-expected teacher retirement system costs. We had lower-than-expected health insurance costs for two reasons. Number one, it was what was happening at D. Hick with their claims experience. But also, we negotiated a less-rich health insurance plan with our bargaining units. So that did help us. We also had five, six teacher retirees and three senior support staff that are retiring, so we're able to recognize some of that breakage. And very, very little state aid, but we were able to pull it together and accomplish what we think are three important goals. Number one, to maintain opportunities for kids, be under the tax cap. And this year in particular, leave a little wiggle room in there for us to go after some things by reallocating funds. So, for example, it's looking like our kindergarten class is going to be smaller than anticipated. So we think we'll be able, the incoming kindergarten class, we think we'll be able to eliminate a section. We think we'll be able to eliminate another section, second grade. What we'd like to do with those funds is we'd like to reallocate those funds to support a school counselor at the elementary school, some additional social workers at the elementary school, and go after a whole bunch of other things. For example, we're looking at the opportunities for computer science at the high school, bringing business back to the high school. We are looking at bias awareness training for our kids at the middle school. A couple of years ago, we lost a grant for that, and that went away, and I really like to bring that back. So if the budget is approved, then we are able to eliminate these sections. I think we can go after some of these things. Also, winter track has been a hot topic for our athletic director. We've had a club-level group, but we'd like to try to get winter, an official winter track team going. So those are things that we try to go after if this is approved. Curious thing happened on the way to budget development this year. Our expenditure budget actually went down. The tax levy is under the cap at 2.61% increase, but the actual expenditure budget went down. So it's like the average person looks at that and goes, wait, how does that work? And that's when I turned to Bruce Martin and said, explain how that works, because it really has to do with debt coming off and all that.
So that's actually something that we would like to make a lot of fanfare about, but is essentially irrelevant to what's really going on in the budget. And what happened is, those of you that have been around for a long time will remember that in 1999, we did a fairly major capital project, and we did 20 years' worth of debt on that capital project. So in, next month, in June of 2019, we will make the final payment on that debt. It's approximately $2 million of annual debt on the expenditure side, and it's supported by just under $1.9 million of state aid. So both of those things will fall off the budget as we go into 2019, 2020. $2 million coming off of the expenditure side, 1.9, a little less than that, coming off of the revenue side in the form of state building aid. And all the rest of the budget is just doing what it would always do. So Paul mentioned a number of those things, salaries, benefits, health insurance, regular aid, special aid, fuel, all those kinds of things that are going on in the budget. And that's the portion of the budget that is supported by roughly 65% supported by tax levy and most of the rest supported by non-building aid, state aid, and a few miscellaneous revenues. So the debt service falling off and the revenue related to that debt service is sufficient to bring the overall budget bottom line down slightly, 1.13%. But all the rest of the budget is doing what it would normally be doing, whether that did or didn't come in or go away.
So we have a couple other, it's a very busy ballot, so we're encouraging everyone to take time to read through it. We have six things on the ballot. The school regular operating budget is Proposition 1. The school bus replacement is Proposition 2. That's our standard replacement cycle. It's in the amount of $330,000. We try to keep our buses on a 10-year replacement cycle. We don't quite make that, but we're close. Proposition 3 and 4 are related to the libraries, and I think there are at least some library folks here tonight. Proposition 5 is a non-voting student board member. We have to put this up for a public vote every two years. And we find it really beneficial to have a high school student sit at the board table and, you know, give us some insight into what's happening from the student perspective at the high school in particular. So I hope people come out to support that. And Proposition 6 is a solar project, which is, we want to take a little bit of time to explain that solar project. It's a very big project. We've been working on it with the support of some local experts like Ben Hohn and Ross Gold. And we've been on this road for many years now, actually, looking at different models. And we finally found a model that we think works for the school district in terms of the financing of the thing. Actually, it's a positive cash flow to the district if we're, if it's aided. That's the key here. We needed to put it on for a vote so that we could lock in an ICERTA grant that comes along with it. But we're still in conversation, we want to make it very clear to everyone, we're still in conversation with the State Education Department about the aidability of this project, because it's doing something that they surprisingly haven't done before, is treat a solar project as a standalone capital project. And we're talking about things like, you know, does it run through your meter or is it a separate meter, and then it comes back as a credit? And they're saying, wait a minute, we're not sure. We have the authority to aid this. They're going to check. I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll get it. But we want, we want everyone to know that if, at the end of the day, the State Education Department says that it's not, it's not aidable, then it doesn't work financially for the district. And so we would put a hold on it until we can convince the State Education Department that it's the right thing to do to aid this project. So we're cautiously optimistic that it'll happen. But we want to be really clear with folks and, you know, honest with them, that it could, there's a possibility that we could put it on hold.
There'll be a line on the ballot there for us to?
There is a line. Number 6 is the solar project.
Okay.
Yep, and it's for all three buildings. It's a very big project. 900,000 kilowatt hours it generates in, you know, a year. And we're excited about it. We think it's the right thing to do, not just for the environment, but, you know, an opportunity to bring some curriculum in, to work with kids and teach kids about clean energy, and we think that's important, so.
We have to vote for it.
You've got to vote for it first. Yep. And the only, and the other thing I would mention, and this is important too, and this is separate from the solar, and now I'm talking auditorium, is that we're going to have a special vote to accept some additional grant money from Kevin Cahill in the state and the Red Hook Education Foundation. This separate vote will take place on June 18th. So we need to accept that money to be applied to the auditorium project. And so we want to get the word out that, and I'll be sending stuff out about that, but I want to make note of it while I have it.
But that's not part of the vote.
That's not part of this vote. We were hoping to get it on this vote, but we missed the timeline. So it'll be a separate vote on the 18th of June.
So this vote is May 21st?
This vote is May 21st, from 12:00 to 9:00. Thanks for the prompt. This vote is May 21st, Tuesday, from 12:00 to 9:00. Tomorrow, we voted registration at Mill Road Elementary School on the 3-5 side from 12:00 to 9:00?
12:00 to 9:00.
If you're not registered to vote, so.
I think we got it all.
Okay.
The vote is also at Mill Road, correct?
The vote is at Mill Road, 3-5 Cafeteria.
As it always is, 3-5 Cafeteria.
You had mentioned state aid. Now, if the Education Department doesn't come through for you, you still get the NICERTA support, right?
You know, it's an interesting question. I would think we would still get the NICERTA support, but it really doesn't work physically for the district.
There may be some net cost at the end of the, and you're proofing this over what time period when you do your analysis?
So, well, it's the 16, you know, we remember, 16 years of 15.
15 is the finance.
But you have to, with the State Education Department, it's an 18-year payback you have to meet to make it work.
I mean.
Yeah.
Right, but even though we know the panels are going to last 35 years or whatever.
Right, I mean, if you want, if you want to go out really far, you might, you might be able to say, yep, it's going to work for us. But, you know, I hate to, I hate to say that without knowing.
Well, I guess I'm happy to be the contrarian and say, if it costs a little bit of money. I mean, we voted for an auditorium, and it costs money, because we thought that was important. And I think that if, you know, if the voters are aware that it might cost a little bit of money if you don't get the Education Department, shouldn't we then be able to say, you know, it's important enough to support that effort?
We've gone into this, we've gone into the solar thing with conversations with the board with the philosophy that we will, we will go after this if it's a, if it's at least a break-even proposition for the district. And have, you know, the thing is, we won't have enough wiggle room to, you know, make sure that we can contingency, know if something happens.
It sounds like no matter what, eventually, it will be a break-even.
Eventually. I mean, you could, you could say that. You could say that.
Well, that's the oldest person on the board.
However many years that would be, yeah.
Because we don't have a crystal ball what the utility increases will be.
We don't.
Five, six years?
Well, you know, we count on Ben to, Ben and Russ to look at the underlying assumptions, and we've had them go through them more than one occasion.
Okay.
And, you know, it looks good.
Okay. Very good. Anything else we should know about those propositions before we move on?
Are there, is there a board member vote? Did you mention that today?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mention that. I guess that's important.
Two of them, yeah.
So we have two, two up this year, and the incumbents are running again, unopposed. So we have Johanna Moore and Maggie Rothwell, and they're on the ballot. I'm sure they would appreciate your support.
Very good. Well, thank you both, as always, for coming and presenting for us.
Thanks for giving us the time. We appreciate it every year. Libraries, so you're going to allow the library?
Libraries, step up. Please, no shoving and pushing. Who wants to go first?
So we have a little shtick. I'll invite the Tivoli Library to go first.
Well, the Tivoli Library just said that they went first last night. We go first today.
Oh, very well. There you go. So my.
May I give you a little handout?
Please, yes, we do well with cards.
Then we go after them. These students are all waiting, and they have exams, and so they.
Yeah.
I'll be brief, okay? This is the, this is the vote. It's on the school ballot. We determined that it's going to be at Mill Road on the 21st. We have come forward again to ask for an increase in the money collected through the 259. We collect money in two different ways, as the town's aware. We have a 414, which we have not increased. We believe that the most equitable way to increase our income is through the school district process. It encompasses more of our true patrons. I noticed our patch on the quilt. So the library is 150 years old, and she's pretty, but she's getting a little worn, and she needs updating. So we're coming forward. Last year, we did not exceed the tax cap. We voted this year to exceed it because there are some plant, you know, we need to take care of the building. And also, we are working on some compression and salary increases mandated by the state. We do have a lot of volunteers that work for us, but anybody who is employed must be paid at least minimum wage, even our pages who are school students at the school. So those are some of the items. I gave you a little handout, and we're in a happy circumstance because we are popular, and we're doing the programming and the circulation and the features and services our community wants. For some people, it is the only place where they can connect for free on the internet. We have a lot of public use of our PCs, and we update those. We also have a new teen room, which is very popular. We've had an increase in circulation on all our materials. Our circulation is on par with larger libraries like Wappinger's and Beacon. And so when you think about the footprint of Red Hook, we have over 13,000 visitors to the building. That's Monday through Saturday. We only close on Sundays. So we think that it's a. it's a reasonable request. It is a four point five percent increase. It will equate to three dollars and twenty-five cents per two hundred and fifty thousand dollar appraised value. Between the two fifty-nine and the four fourteen, that would equate to eighty-five dollars per assessed two hundred and fifty thousand dollar household, and we believe that that value is more than supported. I invite everybody to follow us on Instagram. We have a number of people that come in, and we do a calculation for the families and the individuals who borrow from us. And we've exceeded, in some cases, over twenty thousand dollars in a single year for some of our families. When you think about eighty-five dollars and twenty thousand dollars in materials, you can see that we really give you a very good value for the money that we are given to trust. Our budget is very transparent. It's up there. We invite you also to follow our newsletter, and we have open meetings. And are there any questions?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And of course, please thank your board for doing the work that they do. It's really important.
I'm joined by Don O'Shea, who's also on the board. I'm the trustee and treasurer, so I know the numbers.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you, Don. Okay, Tivoli, you're up. You had a long commute. Well, you look familiar. Does she look familiar to Christine?
Sure. I don't know anybody that looks like her.
Okay, and teens, get ready. You're next.
I also, I have some little pocket cards with anybody in the audience. Want some? They'll read it. Okay. So hi, I'm Erica Kane. I'm the outgoing president for the Tivoli Library Board. I am joined this evening by our library director, Michelle, our incoming president, Alexa, and our vice president, Joe. That's what you are.
Yes.
Joe's worn every hat on the board at some point. So the Tivoli Library actually hasn't come in front of you all for a budget increase request for five years. The last time we were here, five years ago, we asked for a fairly substantial increase under our previous president. The large portion of that was to help us finish our, the renovation of our ground floors so we could put the east room into use. We did successfully complete that. We've been able to move our teen collection over into that facility, as well as our audiobooks. And it's, it basically has doubled the size of the library and gives us a nice flex space to use for programming. If people want to either have a meeting wherein not disrupt everyone in the library, or they want a quiet space, it just gives us some extra space to work with. Also allowed us to rearrange the previous half of the library, the west side of the library. So we've been able to put in new, some shelving units and increase improved flow in there. We have also, since that previous increase, we have upgraded our Wi-Fi. We've replaced all of our technology, all of the desktops, all of the laptops that we use in there, our printing facilities. Everything is improved, although it's always fighting uphill battle to stay on top of modern technology. So in that, since we asked for that budget increase in twenty fourteen, we have seen thirty percent more visitors. We're running forty percent more programs and seeing twice as many children participating in our programs. There's some numbers on the back of the flyer that you guys all have about. We're seeing almost twenty-one thousand visitors in twenty eighteen. We have one thousand, almost thirteen hundred Tivoli-free library cardholders, which are specifically Tivoli cardholders, does not include the visitors from Red Hook, Germantown, Pine Plains, anywhere who, who come in for whether to check out materials or to participate in programs. And so when we came in five years ago and we asked for our budget increase, we said we could get through five years, and somewhat by the skin of our teeth, we've, we've made that work. And so we're asking for a two percent increase, just to stay with the cap of sixteen hundred dollars for, on this vote next week. Most of that will help us stay on top of staffing costs. We do offer, we pay a portion of healthcare costs for the full-time employees who are eligible and choose to participate. As I'm sure many people in this room are aware, healthcare costs change, can change significantly year to year, and we don't really have a way to project what those rate changes will be. So we currently have been able to build a cushion into the budget year to year for those rate changes, but there have been years where we've had to go back and amend the budget halfway through the year to accommodate those, combined with increasing minimum wage costs in New York. And the Tivoli Library Board has made a real point over the past few years, at least as long as I've been on the board, to really try and make an effort to pay a living wage to our staff. We have a smaller staff, but they work a lot of hours. They run a lot of programs, and we want to make sure that they, we can keep them and that they're happy to stay. So as much as possible, we try and keep them working towards a living wage. And we're also fighting this compression issue that Red Hook mentioned a little bit. Whereas minimum wage goes up, we're hiring new staff, you know, college, high school and college students to help out in the summer. We're hiring them at what our senior staff took five, six, seven, eight years to earn, and there may only be a two or three dollar difference. So as we are hiring our starting staff at higher salaries, we've been trying to incentivize our senior staff to keep that spread. So this really will go mostly to keeping us ahead on the staffing costs. Questions?
Any, any questions? All right. Erica, thank you very much, and again, for your board. Please thank them for us. Both libraries have terrific programs, and we really appreciate all the time you put in to those efforts. All right. Patient high schoolers, is that a Nazi moral? Thank you so much for waiting. We really appreciate it. Ben, are you going to lead off?
Yeah, I'm going to lead off here. So I'm here as the citizen representative on the Red Hook High School Environmental Club. Many of the students are here, and I'm going to, their, the purpose of today is to follow on with what Paul was talking about, about the Red Hook's full solar project. This is a project that the Environmental Club has taken on to get the word out about. And I'm going to go through the first few slides, and then we're going to hand it over to them. I will ask the folks, if you do your slide, also maybe just add why this, you think this is important to you. I think that might be useful for the board to hear. So as we know, this Red Hook solar project is on the ballot now. You can go to the next slide. And the school district seeks voter approval on May twenty-first to install these solar systems. This is the proposed layout on the three buildings here. I will actually come back to these layouts in a moment, so you can move on to the next slide. So why does the school want to do this? Paul mentioned this already. The purpose of this plan, as presented to the board, is to save money. But what was not talked about is that the school has been attempting to try to come up with the plan for a long period of time, really to be an environmental leader in this way. It's tough under budget caps to get something forward that doesn't cost out, and that's why this is a unique opportunity so they can do both. And then the third area, and each one of these will be unpacked a little bit by the students, the third area is that, as Paul mentioned, to bring STEM technologies and opportunities for new curriculum for this new energy economy into the school. The next slide here. So why doesn't the school just go ahead with the project? Well, Paul mentioned this. They need voter approval to borrow the money. Yet, the proposition six, which is shown on the screen, doesn't mention any of the positive aspects that the students will be talking about of the project. So the purpose of tonight was to bring them out and let them talk about what they see in the project and how it's valuable. Next slide. I think Paul mentioned this, and I need to be clear about it, that if, if some of the issues that have not yet been resolved for the project don't come through, the voters should know that they won't go forward with the project. So exactly what he said. I think one more slide, maybe for me. Yeah, so this is the budget slide. The total cost of the project is one point eight three million. Recognize that this is all, given the current proposal. The New York State grant is estimated to be three hundred and seventy thousand, leaving a project loan amount of one point four six million. The school would then, what they're doing with the vote, is bond that amount in a fifteen-year, four percent loan payment, which would be approximately a hundred and thirty thousand per year. If the state aid comes through, that would return the school seventy-two thousand dollars a year, and then as well, they'll be producing energy that they'll sell and get compensated for by Central Hudson, which will amount to eighty thousand dollars a year. So when Paul talked about savings, these are the savings he was referring to. It's expected in the first year and for the first fifteen years to save twenty-two thousand. And then beyond that, when the loan is off, the books, as well as the state aid, it would net them a roughly eighty thousand, given this current proposal. And one more slide here. This is, this is where it's turned over.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you could just tell us your name before you get started?
My name is Valentin. Nice to speak to you.
Yeah.
So this is the solar system information. The whole project will be held, would be held on three mains, the three main school buildings. We would have two thousand two hundred and fifty solar panels. The panels are installed on the school buildings' flat roofs. It would generate approximately a million kilowatt hours per year, which is equivalent to forty percent of the school electricity. The space left on the roofs for future, are for future plans, you're going to see that on the next slide. The installation is likely to occur in the spring of twenty twenty, and it's a New York-based installer, Solar Liberty. And also, many other schools have gone solar so far. On that little image there, we see that five, almost five thousand five hundred K to twelve solar schools are there in the U.S. Next slide.
You're doing better than I am. All I have to do is flip the pages.
So here are the proposed layouts. You have Mill Road on the left, Linden Avenue in the middle, and High School on the right. So the, all the blue squares are the panels. And where you notice the white zones, the company who designed that, the arrangement purposely left those white zones clear in case of future projects for the school. Yeah.
And why is this important to you?
This is, okay, that project is important to me because I believe that solar energy is the future. And I think it's also, Abby's going to cover it later, I think it's also really a great way to educate students on solar energy.
Great. Thank you very much. Who's next? This looks like a familiar face.
Hi, I'm Tessa. So, next slide, please. So as you can see, this project has huge environmental benefits. So it's expected to reduce greenhouse gas emissions over the twenty-five-year lifespan by thirty-five billion pounds, which equals forty and a half million vehicle miles, four hundred and sixteen thousand trees growing for ten years, and fifty-eight thousand five-gallon buckets of coal. And this is personally important to me because climate change is such an ever-growing, important issue, and I think it's important that we, you know, do something about it in our community, and specifically our school. So.
Great. Thank you, Tessa.
Thank you.
Can I pass something out to you guys? We have stickers and handouts.
You have bling? No bling?
Not yet.
Yeah, it's coming.
Stand on my tiptoes.
People pull that down if you want.
Can I? All right. Okay, so my name's Abigail Urban, and if I could have the next slide that you bring.
This is your slide.
Oh, that is my slide. Okay.
That's what I thought.
Okay, thank you. So the Seb New Energy Economy Curriculum. So this curriculum that will be provided to the school will offer many sources of new solar curriculum, and the New York Power Authority will train Red Hook teachers, which is super important. And the solar and wind energy jobs are some of U.S.'s fastest-growing opportunities, which will help out many of the students in Red Hook. And they are very technical skill-level jobs, so they're easy entry. So this is important to me because the latest UN climate report says that we have twelve years before the effects of global warming become, they're irreversible. So I think, so obviously, the students, the younger generation should be made aware of this. And as a student in Red Hook, I can wholeheartedly say that not enough of them are. And so this will, and so there's not even a class at the Red Hook right, at Red Hook Schools right now, which is solely focused on the environment. There's biology, which kind of goes into it, but that's more ecosystems. But there's not even like a half-year class on it. So this curriculum will offer an opportunity for students, for teachers to really explore this with the students and help to educate them, and hopefully help to change their lifestyles and change the future. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Abby. Don't run away.
Oh, oh, no.
I'm about to put you in a really uncomfortable position. Are you ready? So if it ends up costing a little bit of money, how do you feel about the project?
Just a pass.
Is this important enough to spend a little bit of money?
For the future of the world, I would say yes.
Great answer.
Yeah.
Thank you, Abby.
You're welcome.
Luckily, you were between me and Paul Fench and Bruce Martin, but I didn't get to see.
No, I'd like to just make one, one comment about, I was at a Red Hook Together meeting, and someone asked if it was, I forget who it was, asked about the potential impact on Linden Avenue of solar panels and the facade of Linden Avenue.
It was Chris Close.
Huh?
Chris Close.
Chris Close, yes. So, so we did investigate that, and that would not be affected. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't see the solar panels on Linden Avenue.
Okay. Any questions? I have a question for the gentleman in the back. So, and for you, Ben, so are you financing this through NIPA? Is that the idea?
That's one of the options. We're still examining. If this goes through, we would examine what could be the best option, but that is one of them.
Okay. Because I noticed you made some interest rate assumptions. We're about to go out to the market for our, one of our projects, and, you know, current rates on fifteen-year money is, you know, some, for us anyway, I don't know what your rating is and what borrowing costs are, but it's, you know, two and a half or less.
Yeah, they, they, they tend to project very conservatively. There's, there's two assumptions in there. They probably projected a little bit low on what the state aid assumption, assumed interest rate would be. And they projected a little on the high side as to what the borrowing cost would be. So they tend to project pretty conservatively.
Environmental Club, thank you so much for coming. You did a great job on your presentation. I would really appreciate you coming and sharing your perspectives with us. It's so great to hear what your thoughts are about this. It can really put a lot of thought into it, and it's just really great to see. And whoever's doing your social media is doing a great job. People can go and get a nice little solar yes on their profile picture on Facebook. They support the project, so we go. Good job. And school district, I just think, you know, we know as a board with a tax cap also to wrestle with, that it can be really difficult to look at these projects that take a little bit of a risk and time to research everything. It's not like an easy thing. And I just applaud you for doing that. And people like Ben and Ross, who have worked with you, we really appreciate that so much. Thank you.
I think we all very much.
Ben and Ross have been super helpful. We're not experts in solar, and, you know, to have somebody along the way for the ride, and very often, you get somebody that walks in the door and tries to sell you on it, and then you look at the underlying assumption and you go, wait a minute, I'm out. But this, this looks like a, you know, pretty good deal for the school district if it comes, if it comes through.
Well, if you have a few extra minutes, and the next item on the agenda is our community solar project that we've been working on jointly with the Village of Rouse. And so that'll be the lead-in this evening for agenda item number three. It's the Community Distributed Generation Project, and we have here with us Jeff Irish from Sun Common, formerly known as Hudson Solar. with us Jeff Irish from Sun Common, formerly known as Hudson Solar. And so Jeff, I thought we would have, we'll let the folks who need to get home and do their exams, good luck with that. So glad it's not me. We'll let them exit. We've had Jeff here on several occasions before to talk about this joint project that we've been working on now for over three years. I just was looking back at some of the old minutes, the Village of Red Hook, talking about working with the town February of 2016. And it's in fact, working on a project that was called for in the Adopted Climate Action Plan back in two thousand eleven, help me here, twelve? Two thousand twelve, which called for a two-megawatt community solar project. And so we have been advancing this all along, studying it and looking into the feasibility. And at last, we left you at our previous meeting, we had voted as a board to go into negotiations with Sun Common on the project. And so we want to bring them back to give us sort of an update, and again, refresh everybody's memory about what the project is, and then we'll talk about after this presentation what the next steps are.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name's Jeff Irish. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New York State specializing in renewable energy. I formed a company seventeen years ago called Hudson Valley Clean Energy in Rhinebeck. We operated under the name Hudson Solar for over, well over a decade, and last year, about a year ago this time, we merged with a larger company out of Vermont, and we're now operating under the name Sun Common, so it's the same company, same project. We currently employ about forty-five people, three miles from here in Red, in Rhinebeck. So I think this is the third time that I've been in front of this board over the last couple of years, and I just wanted to give you an update on the project, and also thank the board for selecting us in the public bid to enter negotiations with on this project. So, just a brief overview, if you wanna go the second chart, what community solar is. So, community solar is a new concept that was put into place by Public Service Commission Order in July of 2015. The goal was really to open up the availability of solar to a wider, wider variety of people in the community. In the seventeen years I've been doing solar systems, I've found that about seventy-five percent of the people that come to us and are interested in solar, we have to say no to, because we cannot cite the solar system on their property. They either have too much shade, they don't have any available ground space, their roof is too old, their roof faces the wrong direction, they're renters, they live in condominiums, there's all sorts of reasons. About seventy-five percent of the people, we had to say no to. State of New York realized that and wanted to increase the availability of solar to people, so they came up with community solar, following what's been done in several other states throughout the country, in particular Massachusetts and Vermont. It's been approaching four years, and that's because these projects take, projects take a very long time to develop, especially the utility interconnection aspect of them. They're large projects, they can have an effect on the electric grid, and also on substations upstream from the feeders, and so the study times are very long, and sometimes the cost can be excessive. So, there's been a lot of learning that's gone on, but the first community solar systems are now starting to be turned on in Central Hudson's area. We just turned on the very first ground-mounted community solar project in Central Hudson on February twenty-seventh. It's at the Point of Praise Church in the city of Kingston. It's in the southwest corner of the exit nineteen throughway stop. And just briefly, what community solar is, do you want me to explain it in order today?
All right, just give the thirty-second version of it, sure.
Thirty-second version is that a centralized solar system, members of the community can subscribe to it or purchase panels into it. The one we're talking about for Red Hook here is a subscription model, and they get bill credits applied to their utility bills. And the bill credits are similar to if they had a solar system located on their property. The level of compensation's a little bit less, but it's similar to it. And it allows people who want solar to get it without actually having to pay on their property. There's no need to run wires from the community solar, it's all done virtually through the utilities billing system. Okay. This is a picture of the Point of Praise community solar system in the city of Kingston. Gives you an idea of what the system would look like here in Red Hook. Solar panels are arranged in rows like that, two high, facing south, and they stand about eight, just about eight and a half feet high at their highest part.
Is, is that the system that's over on the old dump over there, by the?
No. That, the system on the dump near the Home Depot?
Yes.
And that's, that's called a, that's what's called a remote net metered system. That's actually, the credits from that system are going to the Ulster County offices and utility accounts. So this is the preliminary site plan we have right now. It's preliminary because we're still developing it. We're taking input from the community, from the town and village's engineers, and, and others, in order to refine the design. It's, we're encompass about nine acres on the village's existing water well field. We've made some changes, talking to the village's engineers in order to allow access to the existing equipment, and also the expansion of a, for a future well, kind of in the center there, that finger coming in from the west side. We've talked to several of the neighbors to the south, and we've increased the required setback, I believe the solar zoning law requires a twenty-foot setback, or ten-foot setback from the property line, the neighbor's property line. We've increased that to a hundred and fifty feet to allow room for fencing and the addition of screening. System would consist of about six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight solar panels. That number is also subject to adjustment, because we're doing a survey right now, it's going to be completed this week, an accurate survey of the property, so we can come up with a refined site plan drawing. Okay, the project is facing rapidly declining incentives and a very tight timeline. It's both the state and federal government's policy to continuously reduce the incentives that are available for solar energy to the, until the industry is able to stand on its own without government incentives. And there's a lot of incentive reductions coming in now at the end of 2019. This is going to be about a four-million-dollar project is the cost to build it. It'll generate approximately eleven million dollars of electricity over twenty-five years. One of the unique aspects of this project, and it took a lot of time to arrange for, was the financing. It's gonna be owned by a third-party finance company that will be able to utilize the tax credits and the depreciation, sell power to the town and village of Tivoli, and village of Red Hook's municipal accounts, and also direct about eighty, make about eighty-five percent of the output available to residents in the town and the two villages. And the unique aspect is that this, we found a finance company that's willing to sell the project, and sell the system after five or six or seven years that's being negotiated. That's something that the town had said they wanted to at least be able to consider in the future, because that would then allow the municipal accounts essentially get free energy for, you know, perhaps fifteen-plus years, and, and also dramatically increase the savings available to the residents. So, it's pretty hard to find a finance company that's willing to do that. Most of them would like to own it long-term and make all the money themselves, but we found a company that's willing to sell it. Central Hudson's timeline is very tight. They've approved interconnection of the project. It, we've sized the project so that it will fit and be able to access and, and feed into the feeder that runs basically by the town highway garage right now and along Firehouse Lane, and we've sized the project so that it does not backbeat the Rhinebeck substation. There's a federal investment tax credit that's available that is stepping down at the end of this year. It drops from thirty percent down to twenty-six percent. If the project were not to get done in 2019, that step down would cost the project a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. There's another step down in 2021 of the same amount. There's also a NYSERTA incentive that's available on a first-come, first-served basis. It's now twenty cents per watt. In February of this year, it dropped five cents a watt, which cost the project a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that we were kinda counting on. It is available on a first-come, first-served basis, and NYSERTA has not indicated there will be a further incentive when this is gone, and we think it'll be gone in about six months. As of yet, we've not been able to reserve that incentive, but we hope to be able to do that in the next month or two. And then, just a few weeks ago, on April eighteenth, the Public Service Commission issued an order eliminating a thing called the Market Transition Credit, or MTC, which applied to this early community solar project. And this project is, will generate about three million kilowatt-hours per year. The Market Transition Credit is four point four cents per kilowatt-hour for residential and commercial non-demand customers, and new projects in Central Hudson's territory will not, will not get a Market Transition Credit. So, if we had to start over again and apply to do this anywhere else right now, the project would lose three point one million from what we have currently locked in. And that is locked in with Central Hudson at this point due to actions that this town, this board has taken in earlier years. Okay, last page. So the current status is, as the supervisor stated, this is a joint project between the town of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook, with also some involvement coming in now, I think, from the village of Tivoli. The village of Red Hook has voted to take lead agency status for SEER, State Environmental Quality Review. It's their property, it's on their well field, so they're, they're, they're taking that lead. There's been some questions about, do solar modules leach hazardous chemicals? The simple answer is no, not the kind of solar modules that we've picked here, which are crystalline silicon modules, not cadmium tellurite modules. And we've provided chemical analysis to the town and village's engineers just in the last couple of days, so that they can make their own independent assessments of, of that. But the DEC has already issued an opinion that there's no, there's no issue putting the solar panels on the well field. We're, as I said, we're completing a detailed property survey. This weight that'll lead to the final site plan drawing. We've contracted a landscape architecture firm that is now doing visual simulations and a screening design for the properties, particularly on the south of the property, where the south of the site, side of the site, right, indicated that we increased the buffer up to a hundred and fifty feet. As the supervisor mentioned, the contracts are, and documents are currently under negotiation. And because of all those declining incentives, there's now almost a complete unavailability of, of commercial solar panels for systems like this, this year. And, but we were able to order and secure the panels, so we've got them. They're not made in China, so they're immune from the duty thing that's going on. So, but we do have the solar panels secured for the project.
Where are they made if they're not from China?
Korea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. And we do have some work to do tonight related to it. As Jeff mentioned, the village has voted at their last meeting on May second to the Lead Agency for Environmental Review, which is sort of an obvious thing. They're the ones who own the property, know the property well, and can do that review. So they have circulated to other agencies to make sure that we acquiesce that request. It's the SEER Lead Agency, and we do have a resolution here.
I think for the Lead Agency, you have a resolution from the village asserting that they will take Lead Agency, and you have a communication which indicates, which has a copy of the EAF that they have reviewed and provided to you, which is what you do when you're gonna act as Lead Agency. You get the other agencies that are potentially involved, the agencies, an opportunity to comment, object, respond. So you have a letter from the village requesting that you essentially consent to their determination to act as Lead Agency. So you have a, a letter that you would take a position on consenting or not consenting or taking no position. So I think you'd wanna consider that by motion first, if you could.
So, yeah, let's, let's move on this, unless anyone has any objections. Let me know, but it seems to make perfect sense that the village would take Lead Agency on this, and so I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, would you like to review the document? Have we had a chance to review it, Paul? Any questions about that?
Nope.
Okay. Goodness.
I like the, it's just very comprehensive and shows a lot of back and forth with like the DEC and other, other involved agencies, but it's just helpful to see that myself.
Yeah, all the agencies that do it.
And so the village will be reviewing all of that to make their determination, right? And I, and I guess I would also note that the village will, well, do you wanna go through the IMA first?
Yeah, we have just a very brief IMA that our attorney has prepared for both municipalities. I have an attorney for the village reviewing, and actually, the village has already approved this IMA. It's just documents the roles of the two municipalities.
So, and as noted previously, the, the project actually sort of started out of the Community Action Plan quite a few years ago. The village and town received a municipal innovation grant from Dutchess County in 2018 for the feasibility study for the CDG project. So this IMA is to carry that forward through the, the planning and development of projects through a cooperative effort. So the village issued its request for proposal to identify the, the potential project sponsor. So the village, this IMA proposes that the village would continue to develop the agreement and work through that process, and the village would make available this nine-acre portion of their parcel and develop a lease agreement. So they're in the process, as we are in the process of negotiating an agreement for the sponsor development of the project, they are in the process of negotiating a lease for the use of the parcel that would be on their well field. And as was noted earlier, they're working through some of the issues of, of making sure that fits with their current well field use, that they have access to maintain their wells and, and provide for future uses. So they're in the process of doing that. And then the, this allocates the responsibility for carrying some of the expenses of developing those agreements, and then this indicates that the village intends to declare itself as Lead Agency and to review the project. There's also another part of that process in which the village is proposing to undertake a Monroe review, in other words, to review the project and determine whether or not it should make the decisions about planning issues and site plan approval for the project. So they will be holding a public hearing, whether the date of that...
So it's this Thursday, on the sixteenth?
The sixteenth. They will be holding a hearing on that on the sixteenth for the whole project as a whole, and taking comments on the project. And the Monroe issue particularly, and, and their responsibility for undertaking the review of the site plan issues on the project. So as Lead Agency, they're reviewing SEER, under the Monroe, they're reviewing the very specific site plan matters that you saw, the preliminary design for... that you saw the preliminary design for. So that's basically what this agreement would cover.
Very good, thank you, Chris, thank you for that explanation. Does, do you have any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah. Is, does, is the village going to take care of the, the billing, financing of this, of this, in kind of in, in perpetuity after this is operational? So how, how, who, how does that, who, who's handling that?
When you, when you asked the question, excuse me, about billing, related to, to what?
Well, related to balancing, balancing the benefits to the individual people who sign up.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the mechanics of that.
Yeah, so actually, the nice thing about that is that there's an entity called the sponsor, which in this case will, will be the solar developer, it'll be Sun Comment. What they're charged with doing under the PSC order is giving a list to the utility. It's actually the utility's responsibility to take that list and credit all those folks with the generation from the solar install. So that's kind of how that works.
All right, so, so it'll be transparent largely?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Totally.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Okay, so we have a resolution number two?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, dated five fourteen twenty nineteen, authorizing the execution of an inter-municipal agreement with the village of Red Hook regarding the community distributed generation solar project in ISAMU. Is there a second? Thank you very much, Christine. Any further comment? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
I, thank you very much. We have solar, 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 and I should tell you, also update you that the results for the Community Choice Aggregation Program, the seven municipalities joining together. The bidding was conducted, excuse me, the Friday before last, and a energy supply company was provided. And that's at a rate of six point three eight three cents for a two-year period. You will be hearing more about this. We are required to send you letters, which we will of course do, describing the program and what your options are under the program, and to let you know how to participate or not participate in that program. Okay, so item number four is related to.
I just have one quick question. So Chris, you mentioned the consent, not consent, or was that covered under the resolution?
So that's what, the resolution, that was, that was the lead agency consent that we just covered.
Do we have to do this, this covered this, right? So then, rather should execute that based on that and send it back to the village. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
And the other.
To go back to the public hearing, which is just in a couple of days.
Yes.
Has the notification gone out and the village is gonna run it?
Right.
Yes.
And is the town of Red Hook gonna have a representation there for the Energy Committee or something?
I think we are gonna have some representatives. The CAC, Laura Euston's gonna be there, yep. We're gonna have Steve, I believe, is there as well.
At what, at what time is the public hearing?
I believe it's seven o'clock. I believe it's seven o'clock at the village hall.
Okay.
Very good. Number, item number four is related to a good bid. So we have a bid award for the paving project on Echo Valley Road and Middle Road. So the results came in. We've been provided with a summary of those bid results. Oh, I'm looking for my.
Put it back.
Put it back, that's fine. We had several bids come in. Teresa, did you want to talk about this, or would you like me just to read the, the results, what would you prefer?
Or you could read the results, that's fine.
Okay, great. We had five bidders, and the recommendation from our highway superintendent is that we go with the lowest bidder, which is Callahan. The bid came in for a project total, that's the two roads together, of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Callahan.
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 Callahan, I'm sorry, it says Callahan here, but it is Callahan, yeah.
Callahan. Yes, Callahan. I know, it's Callahan in the resolution.
Yeah, you do know that. Um, so.
Everyone says the wrong one, so it's hard to remember the right one.
All good. Yes, there are some companies that sound similar in that business around here, so we apologize if we get your name wrong. So we do have resolution number forty-six. It's dated May fourteen twenty nineteen, authorizing the bid award for twenty nineteen paving projects on Echo Valley Road and Middle Road. And whereas the bid of Callahan Industries Incorporated in the amount of seventy-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents per ton for Echo Valley and seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven per ton for Middle Road has determined to be the lowest responsible bid for the work specified in the specifications on file with Clark. And this, of course, was a public bid and sealed bids that were opened. And so I so move resolution number forty-six. Is there a second? Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
I, thank you very much. Thank you, Teresa Floriama. Okay, item number five is related to, we received another municipal innovation grant a while back to study the potential to share port facilities between the town and village. At the same time, the town of Rhinebeck is also studying similar actions. And so the county has a procurement specialist who would like to do the bidding forms for us. And so, and they will wrap that small expense into the cost of the grant that they funded. And they would like to coordinate it to see if they can perhaps attract one firm to do the analysis, separate analysis that it is for the, the two municipalities. And so there's a, an agreement, an IMA, to allow for that. It's a very short IMA, sort of template from what we use with others.
And Ted Cudsey's good with this?
Ted Cudsey's good with this. I believe he's good with this, I hope he's good with this. They, yeah, so they'll, they'll coordinate the one RFP for the two townships and two villages. Okay, this would be resolution number forty-seven. And this is just a couple hours of work, basically, we're talking about from the county to this. Forty-seven dated May fourteenth twenty nineteen. Is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This is a repeat resolution back in twenty thirteen. We had a resolution to lower the speed limit on East Curly Corners Road. We were not successful in reducing it. We've had requests from residents on East Curly. I've been sent photos of accidents on the, I'm sorry, East Curly Road. And so we'd like to ask you to consider putting forth a resolution to be forwarded to DOT to lower it to forty-five. Apparently it's forty-five on the Columbia side, but fifty-five on the Dutchess side. And it's a very brief resolution that our attorney prepared.
It's a move.
Second.
Further discussion? Anybody very familiar with East Curly?
Yeah, yes, it's important, and we're just gonna keep going until they vote, basically.
Exactly.
Let them with resolutions.
Exactly, okay, we'll probably want to do another study.
Great.
All right, this would be resolution two, we forty-eight?
Forty-eight.
Thank you, dated May fourteen. I think there was a motion.
They'll meet it, I seconded it.
And you already voted, don't they?
I don't know, did we vote? We did, right?
Two is taking control of the meeting, okay, very good. Not a bad idea. Okay, local law E, zoning amendment related to natural resource protection. So this is something we've been working on now for a year and change. We took a look at our zoning and we found it to be inadequate as it related to things such as mining, collecting waters from springs or bottling, and so on and so forth. And so what you have is the, hopefully, final or latest iteration from our planner Ted King. And I would again remind you, there's a page six that has a typo, so there's a replacement page for that you should have. And the question I have for you is, are you ready to, because the ex moritorium extension is going to expire very soon, are you ready to put this up for a public hearing? And we need to have two public hearings. And the reason why is because at our last meeting where we discussed this in depth, we talked about the floating line industrial district area, something you, you felt strongly about. And that we wanted to remove it from our code that we've, if you've read Ted's memo, we've had this potential for light industrial to land anywhere in our town, RFP, I believe, without knowing in advance where it might be proposed. And so we've had this for thirty years now. Fortunately, nothing's, you know, happened with that. But we have decided that we would like to remove it as an option. And we'd like to be able to guide that type of development to our office industrial area and other appropriate places. But there was something in our comprehensive plan many years ago, which is now, by the way, approaching thirty years old, so it may be time to do a refresh on that, which called for instituting a floating line industrial district. So we have to make a very minor change to the comprehensive plan, which now means we have to have two public hearings, which my understanding.
On the comprehensive plan.
On the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Two just on that amendment, or one on the amendment, no, two?
Two just on the amendment, right. So it's a two-step process, just to make sure, because it's a comprehensive plan, that we really give a full opportunity for people to have their say.
You mean like one public hearing that happens twice?
One public hearing that is then closed, and then another public.
Okay, and then another one that's open, okay. So really two like consecutive, but on the same topic?
Right, correct. Correct.
And how many days do we need to have to notice that?
You know.
If we're trying to.
I'm assuming it's ten days. I actually didn't double check that one, but that's what I have for you is ten days. I believe that's correct.
I see a very short special meeting in our future because we, we have eight days between now and the next meeting. But we can't do a Friday before Memorial Day. That, of course, would be tough, tough to do. What about the Friday afterwards? Would that give us another ten days?
Is it just because of the moratorium, that's the only reason you're rushing?
Yeah, we could extend the moratorium again. I think we sort of exhausted that.
Why don't we just roll the dice? If it's been however many years, we haven't had an issue?
No, the, yeah, the problem is the, we can't separate out the zoning from the comprehensive plan amendment. We need to pass both. And so we don't have the time to actually pass both before the expiration of the moratorium.
I'm saying I'm okay with that, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, you're okay with that?
Personally.
Okay.
If it's been more than two hundred years since we had an issue, right?
No, no, it's not just the, it's not the floating line industrial, that's the other thing.
We've probably been here twelve. Yeah. No, I know, yeah, I get it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, within that period of time, we're not gonna, I don't know, to me it just seems unlikely that we're gonna have a big mining company come into town and set up shop, but.
Okay.
My opinion.
All right. Other thoughts, Christine?
Well, I'm fine if we want to have a special meeting, drag me a bit along.
Do them.
But I see Sarah's point, but.
You're saying a special meeting for the public hearing, is that right?
Well, just for the, for one public hearing on the comp plan, and then maybe move to our June meeting for both public hearings, the second one on the comp plan and the zoning?
Could, could we do the zoning the same night?
Or maybe we should. Yes, the, as the second one, right? Do I have that correct, Chris? We need to do the zoning with the second comprehensive plan?
Well, you can do the zoning anytime you want to, it's just that you can't adopt the zoning until you're.
Well, that's what I'm.
It's consistent with the comp plan. So you can hold a hearing on the zoning, I think. You can take comments on that zoning, because as a matter of, you know, process, you just need to hear comments on the specifics of the zoning. But we just can't adopt the zoning until we also are in a position.
Right.
Makes sense to set the public hearing for the zoning with the first comp plan hearing, only because what if we hear something and want to tweak something and we have to do it on a public hearing?
Do both at the same time, okay.
It just seems like it makes sense to.
Okay.
If we're ready to set a public hearing on the zoning, then do it earlier than.
Because if you have text changes earlier, then.
Okay, so sure, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. So this, the Friday after Memorial Day, then what is that?
Is that the thirty-first?
Is that the thirty-first?
Wait, why do we have to do it on Friday?
We don't, we don't.
Okay.
Do you want to choose a, a day or a night?
I think if we're gonna do a public hearing and we actually, like, it's for a public hearing, I don't, it's doing it at ten o'clock on a Friday.
So when do you want to do it? Do you have some dates you'd like to propose?
Wow.
At least twelve days from now.
Okay.
Okay, so it can get noticed in the paper?
Like the Wednesday night, the twenty-ninth or something?
Yeah, that's open, because that's.
What's that?
It's a, it's the magical fifth Wednesday of May with no meetings at town hall.
Is the twenty-ninth?
The twenty-ninth.
I know, because I tried to schedule communications committee on that night, but I'm happy to give it up to the public hearing if you'd like it.
On a way on a business trip, because it was the magical fifth Wednesday. But if you can make a quorum, then that's, you know, okay with me.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you make the twenty-ninth, though, while you're on your trip?
No, not till June thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay, what would be a good time, folks? What would you like?
I don't care.
You were open? Sarah, is there a time that works better for you, Christine?
I'm gone, otherwise I have to.
She's not.
Oh, you're gone, sorry, yeah. Bill?
Yeah.
Seven thirty.
Seven, seven thirty, shall we just do it our usual time?
Seven thirty, sounds good. Seven thirty, Wednesday, huh, sorry, yeah, Wednesday. Me twenty-eighth.
And so you're proposing to have a public hearing?
A public hearing for both.
Both.
With, with the anticipation, I think, that we would, we would continue both, right? We have to do that.
Well, no, we've got closed one.
Right, close the one, and then renotice the second.
That's right.
Right? But the zoning has to happen a second time.
The comp plan has to happen second time.
The comp plan has to happen second time, but I feel like the zoning could too.
Well, I mean, if you have, if you have a hearing on it and you don't have any comments, well, and you all are happy with it, then fine. If you have a hearing on it and you want to, you know, make some changes, then, then we, you know, renotice, continue the hearing.
All right, so we have some SEACR work to do. We have a part one, that's a full assessment form.
I have, I have a question about this. It, it, it's a, collecting water is Xed out everywhere, and, but we're taking care of, of the issue that exists now. Ed was grandfathering.
Yes, so that language, yes.
Okay.
So let me, since you're going to that, let's go to that.
Which document are you looking at?
Hmm?
Which document?
The corrective page.
The local law.
The local law, oh, the corrective.
Yeah.
He just, yeah.
The X just means, look here, this is the change that he made. And what he changed was to take the OI off of the column.
Mm-hmm.
That's why he changed it on that column.
I understand, I understand that, right? But, but we, with the issue that we have, it would, it would be grandfathered and therefore allowed.
Yeah, here's the, here's the language, Harry, on page twenty-five that you're referring to. Okay. Section one forty-three, one forty-six, you'll see it in bold.
I'm fumbling through the papers.
Yeah, page twenty-five, that's it.
It's like the last page.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have the right?
Yeah, I have it.
Yeah, okay, no worries, no worries, we're doing fine on time. The audience is riveted, they're not gonna go to sleep.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So this language says, so there is an existing collection of bottling waters in our. collection of bottling waters in our
Oh, you're recalling it.
community. And the language says grandfathering of existing light industrial uses in the RD zoning district for the purposes of this section, uses in the RD zoning district described as-
RD three zoning.
RD three, yes.
Yeah.
RD three zoning district, um, described as collecting the waters of a natural free-flowing spring and operating and associated bottling works. Um, we don't have a bottling works here, but we do have, uh, an operation that collects spring water and uses it for everything from bottled water to pools to, uh, backing up fire companies, um, that are in operation at the time of adoption of local law E of twenty nineteen, that would be this law, shall be deemed a permitted use indefinitely, but only to the extent that the collection of waters by such uses do not exceed ninety-nine thousand gallons per day and provided, and there's a lot of language that essentially says that, um, provided it's operating in the manner that it's operating in today. And so there would be a limitation upon that. Once it goes above ninety-nine thousand gallons a day, it's required to have a permit by D E C. In fact, I think the current regulations say that it's capable of. And so I think they're looking at whether or not they can on their own end also limit it to ninety-nine thousand gallons or less a day.
So, but that operation has to be lawful as of the time the law goes into effect.
Well, it says, yeah.
Except for the use.
Huh?
Except for the use.
Says in accordance with all applicable codes, ordinance, regulations and other requirements.
Except to the extent that it's so deemed a permitted use, kind of this language.
So this is the grandfathering. Remember we had at the last couple of meetings, we talked about grandfathering applications and grandfathering projects and-
Well, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that if there was an application to combine a couple of parcels to, to meet the minimum of five acres and that's never been decided, this law by passing it is not gonna make it legitimate.
Well, I don't think that was ever, that was ever pursued. That, that was a casual conversation several years ago.
Well, I just wanna make sure it doesn't-
I don't think it was-
The language of that grandfathering doesn't-
Well, it's been grandfathered, right.
It's being grandfathered now. You know, the question is that, um-
Within the three minute, the three minutes.
Use is being grandfathered.
The use is being grandfathered now. That's, that particular operation-
Under the language, would be proposed to be grandfathered.
Has been and that's been an operation for decades and decades and probably-
But it is saying here about shall not be expanded, restored, moved, changed or reestablished. So I would think that it would prohibit that scenario.
Good.
Seems to me.
Is it, I believe it's a three acre parcel now with the intention of staying, so, uh, three acres.
Well, it's, Bill's point is if somebody down the road, cause it's grandfathered zone twenty years, if somebody buys an adjacent parcel to put them together, you know, how would that affect this? But they, I think it says that the use can now be expanded.
Yeah, yes, right.
So it's something to certainly give some careful look, you know, look at and certainly other folks can take a look at that.
Yeah.
See how they feel about that language.
Yeah, and I think that the owner of the establishment would probably wanna-
And then I just have a question, um,
The neighbors.
In this same section where it says, you know, for the purposes of this section, uses in the RD three zoning district described as, and then quote, collecting the waters of a natural free-flowing spring and operating associated bottling works, end quote, is the language that quote, is the language that's currently in the zoning district. So, um, if we grandfather that, is that, you know, can we get rid of the associated bottling works part as part of this update or not?
I don't, I don't think that's necessary, um, but our attorney would know better than I would. I think the language that talks about-
There isn't one, so I wanna make sure there was.
Changing, changing, um, you know, the nature of the use.
Right, I don't know if we can change that underlying language in this or not. Am I, am I asking that correctly, Chris?
So he's using the language that's currently in the zone.
Right.
Which going forward under the amendment would be a prohibited use in all districts. So that language is still used to describe-
But if you're grandfather-
But we're grandfathering it.
It's two part, collecting and then bottling.
Yeah, but look at the language here. It says that they cannot change. So it says, but shall not be expanded, restored, moved or changed and having a bottling operation is very much-
Right, but, but my point is if there is no bottling operation there now, then why would we want to grandfather that and confuse the issue?
There is not-
Well, that's a different question.
So can we deal with that in the same time, in the same bunch of changes?
I mean, if you would like us to-
Or do we have to do that separately under a different procedure?
You mean you're saying that you wanted to re-collecting the waters?
Of a natural free-flowing spring.
And doing what with it?
Well, right now it's put in, it's put in a large tanker trucks and, and carted away.
And just collecting trucks. Right.
And carted away.
You know, collecting it for sale, so.
Right.
Bottling works would be, would be quite a major change of the parcel
Yeah.
if you actually were bottling water there. And it, it does, doesn't really make a lot of sense.
Well, I wish they were here, but I think that he was probably trying to, um,
Yeah, I realize he's referencing, right, exactly.
Use the description of the use that's fitting into the current zoning code, right?
So my question is, can we address that underlying section while we're doing all this or we would have to do that separately, I guess?
Well, you could. I think that, um, I think the question is then how would you want to define it? I think you'd have to add another modifier to your grandfathering clause that says, you know, a use that's described as so-and-so but does not include a bottling works or something to that effect on site. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, that would be, what they're doing now is that they're loading it into the truck and, and, uh, and selling it. Truck loaded it on.
I mean, I, I hear the concern. I think the language covers it, but maybe you don't agree, uh, Chris. I just think it, it's pretty clear.
Well, we could take it in the summer.
It cannot be expanded, restored, moved, changed. I mean, instituting a bottling work with that operation is certainly a change.
Well, then I guess somewhere we should just have a record of what was in operation at that place
Mm-hmm.
when we did this, so that it's clear, you know, whatever, twenty, thirty years down the road, that there was no bottling plant.
Right. Our, our code requires, uh, folks to come in and say, I'm illegally non-conforming operation and here's the extent at which I'm operating, uh, particular use.
I don't, I don't think it's a large exposure, quite frankly, because a, a bottling works would, would not make any sense there.
Right, right. But I, I, I do think that, you know, if, if, uh, more intelligent minds don't agree with me that, uh, the language covers that we should, you know, satisfy that concern of, of pristine.
I, I would suggest just talk to Ted.
Yeah, and, and, uh, maybe the attorneys can, can see if they feel comfortable with that language. All right, well, let's, uh, why don't we dive in? We got a full E A F. And and, uh, the usual government approvals, planning and zoning actions that are required, project details, what's the amount of projects, so a lot of this, um, is not applicable.
Right, and what I would note is that this environmental assessment form reviews both components, the amendment of the comprehensive plan and the amendment to the zoning as well, um, being considered together.
And the zoning.
Um, and if you would particularly, you can turn your attention to the part three attachment, which is not for your consideration tonight, but, um, Ted lays out the history of the development of this, um, provision and the basis and the reasons for, uh, considering some of these amendments. Um, so I think you might wanna look at that carefully, um, you know, for the next, uh, conversation.
Yeah. Okay, we have a resolution. Would this be forty-nine or fifty-six?
Are you looking at the classifying, Chris?
Classifying, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, uh, dated May fourteenth. It's, uh, classifying this action, or these actions actually, um, establishing lead agency and to classify it as a type one action. That's both the amendment and the zoning law in ISO mode.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-
Thank you. And did we do, uh, setting a public hearing as a resolution or did we just do-
Yeah, no, there's gonna be, there are gonna be a couple more resolutions.
I know.
So that's the first one.
Fifty.
And then the next one is establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, so that one would be-
That would number fifty.
So comprehensive plan first?
Comprehensive plan amendments.
Comprehensive plan, right.
So that's, you know, very small amendment, basically removing the potential for floating light industrial district.
Right, and you have a draft of that amendment, um, which is just one page.
Right.
You have that in your packet, right. Uh, so that one we discussed, um, setting-
This is a, it's a paragraph.
Setting the public hearing date for May twenty-ninth at seven thirty. Um, and then, um, uh, the clerk would, as usual, send the notice to the neighboring municipalities and, uh, for a ten-day notice, refer it to the planning board. So we will need to make sure that we ask the planning board to, um, review this and provide comments on it because that's one of the things that we're looking for, okay?
Yeah.
By the twenty-ninth?
It'll be referred to the county as well.
Twenty-ninth, yeah.
By the twenty-ninth.
I think they have a meeting this Monday, if I'm not mistaken.
So that would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and then we have resolution number fifty-one.
We don't have a motion, I'll move the motion, number fifty, establishing a Republican.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye, and we did seven thirty, okay, that's, uh, we did motion, I think, to set the public hearing for the zoning. If I'm not mistaken, at seven thirty, can we revise it as resolution number fifty-one for seven thirty-five, uh, on May twenty-ninth?
So this is, uh-
This is now for the zoning.
Natural resource.
Exactly. That's a local law E.
And could I just, uh, I think, uh, in the packet, I'm seeing-
We- A C A F, yeah.
This, no, this little document. So this was an early draft and that's not the form that we're using. We're using, um, the, the one paragraph amendment with the resolution because our comprehensive plan is not in our local laws. It's a document that's adopted by resolutions correct, so that's the form that we're looking at. This is just an early draft. And yes, you're right, Robert, together with the comprehensive, uh, together with the E A F, we have a, a C A F, a coastal assessment form as part of our review of the environmental, um, impacts of the project. And Ted's also provided, so that you can look this prior to your, um, determinations, a form of local waterfront revitalization program consistency determination. So again, we will be reviewing that and we will need the planning board to review that uh, because the comprehensive plan amendment, um, and I guess, and the zoning law too, have a potential impact townwide, so they do include coastal areas.
So the local waterfront is not being determined in the future?
The local law-
The local waterfront. Do I sign that for tonight?
No, we're not, we would, that would be something we're considering for the future meeting, correct?
Okay.
So you're gonna, so we have to-
So, we just need to vote on fifty-one at seven thirty-five.
Right.
And we, I think we have a second again.
Oh, did we?
Okay, thank you, all in favor? Aye, thank you very much, okay. Moving right along, we are on agenda item number eight.
Okay, so, um, before we start this discussion, I have to excuse myself.
Okay.
So I will also excuse myself.
Very good. And in fact, uh, may we invite Lori Houston, who chairs the C A C, to come up for a minute?
Erin, Erin Cannon.
Erin Cannon is coming up? Erin Cannon. The dynamic duo.
Since she was here.
What's that?
Since she was here.
Since she was here.
Oh, since she was here.
Sucker into coming up to the-
Good news, ladies, I have graphics.
Oh, look at that.
Excellent. So, um, my name is Erin Cannon and I am part of a volunteer organization called Red Hook Together. Um, it's an informal group that's been, um, organizing various collaborations across, um, different organizations in the town for about ten years now. Um, we just gave a presentation at, uh, the Northern Duchess Alliance Annual Breakfast. Um, and at that breakfast, uh, we were approached to consider Red Hook, um, signing on to, um, become a sustainable community. Um, there's a grant that's available to help us, uh, pull together the various, um, organizations. There's fifteen, you have the paperwork in front of you. Um, there are fifteen focus areas, um, it's on page two of what we gave you, um, that includes, um, different, um, components of the community that would work together, um, to move the community, um, to consider different aspects of sustainability. Um, and then we would get a certification from Audubon International. Um, Audubon International's mission, I have it right here. Um, Audubon International is a non-for-profit environmental education organization based in Troy, New York. Um, and, uh, their core value system is the belief that voluntary education and certi- certification programs can simultaneously advance ecological, economic and social goals. Considering what we saw here today, um, collaboration and sustainability seem to be a theme that many of us are thinking through. Um, and that there might be some critical issues that we have to face and the more we practice collaborating, um, with one another, perhaps the more prepared we'll be, um, as we move forward. I'm gonna turn the floor over to our resident expert, um, who, um, we agreed that we would, that we would, um, um, put up, uh, our various resources. Um, as many of you know, um, I work at the Barnes Center Pacific Engagement, so we would sign on as a partner. Lori is everything else in the town, so sure. But we would, um, we would, uh, we're approaching the town, um, to, um, make a resolution or proclamation that you would agree to be a partner along with all of these other entities, um, in these focus areas. We offer our resources and volunteers as well, um, to work together to, um, to go through the, it's about a two-year process where, um, very similar to what, uh, the Red Hook Library did with the aspirations, conversations, uh, reporting out, um, uh, where we really just, uh, spoke together as a community about what it would mean, um, what sustainability means to us and, and how we might work together, um, as we move into the future.
Lori, is there a red?
Yeah, I, that's pretty comprehensive. I'm more sort of like, do you have questions about this? And, um, in order to be first in New York, um, we need to, uh, get that resolution that I know you have on hand.
Could you, Lori, I apologize, I don't have those fifteen areas up on the screen. Could you possibly just read them off for us?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, this is a wonderful way to think about what is sustainability, right? So, um, they, these sort of sustainability indicators have been shared with us as, as, uh, this program's interpretation of that and I'll go through all fifteen. Agriculture, economic development and tourism, education, environmental issues, governance, public health, housing, open space and land use, planning, zoning, building and development, population, and we're coming up on a census year, so very timely, public safety and emergency management, recreation, resource use, transportation, and last but not least, volunteerism and civic engagement. So this is just celebrating all the things that our community is already doing and sort of just trying to organize it a little bit. And as Erin said, by collaborating and working together and sort of figuring out what we're all doing in these different silos and putting them, and sort of like, here's what we're doing, here's where we wanna go as a community. I think it's just a really nice framework for us to kind of rest our hats on.
And we would have then access, the grant allows us access to, um, uh, the staff at Audubon International to help, that actually helps people move through this process, not unlike a comprehensive plan, I'm guessing, like where you actually have somebody help guiding you through, um, but it's really, you know, it's community-driven. We're in the front, but we get advice and resources that we wouldn't get if we didn't have the grant. And the other caveat is that there's only one community in New York that would have access to the grant and it's basically first come, first served, so, um, and it requires the commitment of the municipality in order to be eligible for getting the grant, but there's no, we don't actually have to write a grant. We just have to have the proclamation and then we can submit it to Audubon. So it's, it's a, it's a fairly straightforward, we've, we've looked for all of the fine print to see if there's anything in there that seemed like we would then have to commit to some, you know, and it's, it's pretty good.
And I think we, we shared and talked about the fine print of an annual membership fee after the grant. And I think we, we shared and talked about the fine print of an annual membership fee after the grant period expires, if we choose to keep going with this and recertify in future years, and that, uh, is seven hundred and fifty dollars for a community of our size, which is over ten thousand, and, uh, Bard, our offices would be happy to figure out how to share that with the town, because it's important to all of our areas.
We do have to have a culminating community project, but the, um, but that, it doesn't, it's whatever the community decides. So if, for instance, there were more solar panels or, um, whatnot, we all wanted to kind of get together, that, that, that could be the project, it's not a playground yet. Build another playground, I mean, there's, there's lots of things coming, um, it could be a way to expand, um, the reach to get more people involved, to connect to more people, which is something I know we're all trying to do, um, and, um, yeah, so.
Great.
That's all we got.
Okay, well, that's pretty good, no, no cost to us to, to join, and we get some, some assistance and some planning, more planning, more work.
And implementation.
And implementation, of course, of course, implementation, we don't, we don't need folks to collect dust, too. We have it, but. It does seem like a possible, like, helpful precursor to a comprehensive plan process, which usually involves some kind of community group participation, you know? So timely maybe in that way too, if we, if the town board decided to undertake that in the next, you know, whatever, next year.
At our last Red Hook Together meeting, we had the community center, we had the Red Hook, we had, um, uh, libraries, we had schools, we had, we had a lot of organizations that would need to get involved, and many people thought that it was a good idea and felt like they could put their support behind it, and, um, you know, many hands make light work kind of thing. If we all, um, approached it, uh, in, in this sort of collaborative spirit, that it would, it wouldn't actually be as much work as otherwise. I mean, we already have a really good, strong foundation, and one of the reasons why, um, the Northern Duchess Alliance asked us to come speak is because many communities are looking for models for collaboration, so this could be another way for us to connect with other communities too, and since that's something you're already doing in some areas, just seems like a natural fit. So you already have that structure of your meetings, where we can then, like, overlay this on top of it.
Yeah, and many people were willing to do that who were, who were part of that group.
That's great.
Great. Very good, thank you very much, um, I know you've got a chance, uh, folks to consider this. This would be, we've lost a man to a clock, without a clock.
I think it's fifty-two.
But I think it's resolution fifty-two.
Is that right?
Correct.
Oh, she's back, it's good, that's, all right.
No clock drops, Robert.
Oh, gosh, uh, no, they're there, they're, they're somewhere.
In your office.
Dated May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, uh, in support of Sustainable Communities Program. Whereas the town of Red Hook Town Board, C A C, and Energy Committee have undertaken a number of activities in support of, for the town's climate change action initiatives, including among other things, the preparation of a climate action plan adopted by the town board. The town has appointed a local climate change task force, we're working on that with Cornell Cooperative, um, which consists of members of the C A C and Energy Committee, and others which provide the town board with information about establishing and implementing climate smart initiatives. Uh, whereas Audubon International Sustainable Communities Program, which is international science-based third-party certification program, guides communities through a customized journey to become healthy and vibrant places in which to live, work, and play, um, we've already mentioned the fifteen program areas. Um, as part of the, as part of the process, the town would appoint a sustainability coordinator. Lori Euston, you failed to mention that you've offered yourself as the.
Accepted.
Accepted.
She said it anyway.
Your needs aren't it, this, this resolution.
Want that, want, want that, uh, recognized, um, in order to further sustainability goals in support of a healthy environment quality of life and economic vitality. And I assume.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much, ladies, thank you very much for sticking with us here, and we really appreciate the work. Lori, obviously you have lots of time on your hands to take on this.
Lori, I think this is, the way this is worded, it, 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 you're, you're the chair in perpetuity.
No, she lives in country.
Okay, uh, all we have left is a little bit of correspondence, um, and that is a letter from Community Action Partnership in Duchess County.
Well, tell, uh.
Christine, you want some back?
Oh, Christine is left, um, we can get Christine back in here, uh, she's aware, she has a copy of this. Thank you, Christine, coming back, and we just have one last item on the agenda for tonight, and that's correspondence. A letter from Community Action Partnership, uh, thanking the town for its, uh, support of the programs. In two thousand and eighteen, over fifteen hundred families, three thousand, three hundred and forty-two individuals in Duchess County alone received services, uh, to help them remain safely housed, have adequate nutrition, sufficient lighting and heat, and the support they needed to move past their, um, emergency. And so we really rely on them as a community, as a resource, to help guide our residents to programs that are available, many of them through the state or the federal government. So, um, we appreciate, uh, the letter from, um, Elizabeth Spira, who's the C E O. Um, and encourage you, if you, uh, wanna find out about the programs, to go to the local office here. That's forty-four dash forty-sixth East Market Street in Red Hook, and that is, as I know it, just past the Curry House, heading east on the same side of the road. Any other correspondence? Okay, would anybody like to make some public comments before we conclude tonight's meeting? Linda.
Maybe the audience didn't have a chance really, they asked the school board about those, uh, solar installations. As far as, um, does the company do maintenance on it, and do they clean them, and how do they act when you have hailstones coming at them?
Yeah, um, those are, those are all good questions, I happen to know a little bit myself, but I think those questions are best posed to the school district, because they would know which panels are being used. Um, the good news from what I read is that solar panels, and we have an expert in the audience, actually somebody who's, um, very involved in New York State in solar. Um, Jeff, did you wanna chime in about panels, I know you don't know the particular panels.
Hail's a big concern as far as.
Yeah.
They're getting bigger and bigger all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as breaking the, um.
Well, I, I'm not familiar with the particulars of the school board project, but, um, solar panels are U L listed in, in the United States, and part of the testing and certification to U L is their ability to withstand certain size hailstones at certain speeds. So they're, 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 I, I don't think they'll survive every imaginable possible hailstone that comes, but it is part of the standard testing.
So that would be the school's insurance that would cover something like that.
That's what I was thinking, like, would the insurance then kick in, like, let's say there was an active god, right?
Usually, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good, any other public comments? If not, thank you all for coming out this evening, thank you all at home for joining us. I make the motion to close the meeting on May fourteenth.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Christine, is it like looking at here? She has.